Good evening and welcome to this evening's schoolwork meeting. Mr. Romano, roll call.
Mrs. Brickman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Schatt.
Present.
Mrs. Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
All right, present.
I'd like to give recommendation to withdraw to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee, and I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Delaney, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brickman?
Yes.
Mr. Schatt?
Yes.
Five yes?
Do you realize that Mrs. Brickman's the one that made the motion?
I'm sorry?
Do you know that Mrs. Brickman made the motion, not me?
She did, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go into executive session and we'll withdraw from there into regular session at 7:00 PM. (audio cuts out)
Mr. Romano, please withdraw us from executive session.
Mr. President.
Present.
Mr. Reeves.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mr. Delaney.
Present.
Present.
And we apologize for our delay coming out. We had some business in executive session that we were trying to wrap up. We're gonna have to go back into executive because we didn't get it all finished and then we had some technical issues. So, thank you for bearing with us. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. First on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda itself. We were given a copy of this a couple of days before the meeting and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt it as presented and ask for a second.
Second. Second, sorry.
That's all right. Anybody have any conversation, discussion needed? Roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved. This evening for public commentary, we have one card. Adriana Killian, there you go. Please rise to the microphone. State your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Yes.
My name is Adriana Killian. I live in 1012 Vicent Drive, Cincinnati, four five two four five. What else?
That's all right.
Okay.
You can take the mask down if that would help.
So, I'm here to talk about basically a $4 million issue. And first, I would like to introduce myself. I'm not an educator, but I can say that runs in my blood. Both of my grandparents are teacher. My mom is a teacher and a principal and uncles and I'm in the, my brother is a professor. So, I'm here to talk about an issue that it is concerning me and that is the sleep deprivation and chronic sleep reduction. And that reflects our starting time at school, you know, and it's an issue that it's known for decades. And study after study, it's been proven that affect the kids negatively. And there's no controversy, but at the same time, that's nothing that's been done. So, we're talking about cognitive performance, memory retention, concentration, obesity, irritability, anxiety, depression, mental health. And I'm making the math and in order for a kid to have the consensus they need between eight and 10 hours of sleep at night. And if your kid needs to be asleep at 9:30, is sleeping, not going to bed, to wake up at 5:30 to be ready to be in class at seven. So, it is hard. I don't know if you guys have kids here, they don't want to go to bed early. And if your kid needs 10 hours of sleep, they need to go to bed at 7:30. And if a kid needs 10 hours of sleep and they're losing, going to bed at 9:30 and lose two hours at night, and if you make the math, that's 10 hours a week. What it's 40 hours in a month. And it goes on and on. So, how is this affecting your kids? And I did a small survey of a bunch of friends and neighbors that has kid in school and I'm shocked because I'm, but start preparing my kids at 8:30 and I'm the bad mom in the neighborhood. And they're telling me that none of their kids go to bed before 10:30. And I have some high schoolers that were making the math and they're having less than seven hours of sleep. So, I think we need to talk about it. I wish you have a doctor here because I'm not a doctor either, but I'm reading a lot and the more I read, the more I talk about, the more concerned I get. And I know it's a complicated matters. I talked to the superintendent and she explained to me that to do that change is a $4 million that we don't have. But I think we need to start making a plan and really looking deep in this issue because if you don't do it, we're failing our kids. We can see suicide rates and all the other stuff going around. If you don't give our kids the two that they need, that's the basically need for their bodies and minds to deal with the challenge that they need to child, they need to face at that age, that it's not just academic, it's social, it's their body changes, their emotion and all that other stuff, then you're failing. And I really appreciate all the efforts that is being put to improve and maximize learning. But if you don't address that issue, that's not gonna have the results that is expected because a kid that are not mentally ready to learn will never learn, does not, or learn how we would like to if they don't have the tools that they need to. We're just gonna be putting Band-Aids that cost money too. And so, I'm here for that. Maybe I suggest the, the district to do a survey with sleeping time of the parents so we can see with numbers how big this issue is or how the kids can be affected.
Ten seconds, please.
Okay. So, that's my questions. What we can do, what we can do as a parent, as an educator, as a doctor, as a society, and I know there's no magical solution, that's no magical plan, but what can you do for, implement a long-term solution?
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you the card afterwards so that you can follow up. Great, thanks. Thank you. Consent agenda. Mr. Romano.
Okay. David, you wanna go to the personnel first?
Good evening, members of the board. This is Adams, Mr. Romano. In front of you is the personnel agenda for March 22nd, 2021. On the agenda today, we have five resignations. I did want to take a moment to point out, Mr. Lance Perry's name is on there. He's been with us for seven years as the Director of Operations and he has served this community and district well during that time. We wish him on his new endeavor and he will be missed. We also have on there, on the agenda, a proposed hiring of one special ed teacher, two custodians, cafeteria worker. We have the proposed transfer of two cafe workers into positions of increased time. We also have Mr. Lefata who is currently serving in the role of Director of Secondary Special Education and Preschool K-12 Student Services. He will now be transferred and moving to the Director of Operations. Included in this agenda is the proposed approval for two part-time paraprofessional aides, two coaches, three substitute cafeteria workers, and multiple student teacher volunteers. And finally, we have the proposed stipend approval for mentor teachers, the Writing Revolution Training through the Striving Readers Grant, and additional child nutrition support with COVID, and our Wellness Champions. So, I respectfully request that you approve of the personnel agenda as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation. I'll put that on the top.
You want to continue with the consent?
For visual on the consent? I forget about it. Sorry.
Excuse me.
I hate the consent.
Thank you. So, items 6.02 and 6.03 are approval of minutes. Those were the minutes for February 22nd, the regular meeting, and for March 8th, the regular meeting slash work session. 6.04 are the donations from February into March. And that was, the first donation was from Rick and Kay, they're young, donated an air hockey table to Holly Hill Elementary for students to earn time to use at lunch through the PBIS program. Kwanis donated $100 to West Claremont High School to the Key Club. West Claremont High School Thanksgiving Dinner received the following donations. Ryan Ford donated $50. Lee and Chris Tony donated $50. And the following people donated library books for the district libraries, the Art family, the Overbay family, and Paula Wolf. And the West Mill Tabasco PTO donated $3,837.50 to support staff and students in the classroom. Item 6.05 is a list of four contracts for the districts. These contracts are being submitted for board approval because they do require 412 certificate, either because of the amount and/or because they extend over the fiscal period that we have to do that. They are ProSource for scanning and records retention services, Power School and Hamilton-Caremont County Cooperative for student information system software, support services, and hosting services, Robert J. Miller and Associates for grant consultation services, and Spectrum Charter Communications for lease and maintenance of fiber optic cable connecting the district facilities. So, those are the four contracts within item 6.05 that's being recommended. Item 6.06 is a request for the accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Claremont County Budget Commission annually. This resolution needs to be acted upon by the board. What it does is list out the, the valuations and the millage amounts that are calculated by the county auditor submitted to the State Department of Taxation. So, those do come back before the board. It's requested that those rates and amounts be approved. Item 6.07 are the financial statements, the bill pages, and the list of investments for February. And later on in the evening, during the treasurer's comments, I'll do a couple of minutes on our fiscal fitness, which relates to the financial statements on that. And those are the items that are being recommended in items 6.01 through 6.06.
6.07.
6.07, I'm sorry, financial statements. Thank you.
You've heard the recommendation for the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schaaf first and second by Mr. Rudy. Discussion. Mr. Romano, I'm gonna ask again that we do our financial statement where we get a little bit more meat of just not the financials because our community and our, our public is not seeing that material.
You're gonna get about eight to 10 slides during the treasurer's comments.
That's tonight, but before.
Oh, before that.
Previous meetings, we, we keep getting the same thing. We're not getting anything about the actual financials.
I can do that presentation now if you'd like or if you want to wait?
That's all right. We can go forward. Just going forward, can we do a little bit more than just, here's the reports?
We'll do that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Sure. Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
For item 7.01, Mrs. Preston is gonna present the revised calendar and the WCOA and summer school update presentation. Good afternoon, evening, whatever time it is. I guess it's evening. I'm losing track of time here. I'm gonna start, do you want me to start first with the calendar?
Yes, the calendar.
Yeah. So, we, I wanted to provide you with an update on some feedback that we received regarding the calendar and just some other information that, that I think you might find interesting before we would move forward with the recommendation. So, we received feedback from one parent of a student who's a student in one of our elementary schools. And I think that it's likely that his feedback represents a general consensus of how many parents feel right now. And the consensus, or his feedback was around just like feeling like students are out of school a lot. And, and if there were going to be additional days that students were out of school for next year, just like, oh my goodness, like how could there be any more additional days, you know, that students would be out of school. And so, I just wanted to kind of really illustrate a little bit more about what this school year has looked like and how that compares with what next year's proposed calendar would look like because I think we're all really feeling right now the impact of what has really been a lot of days out of school for students. So, during this school year, and this is, you know, doesn't account for last spring and all of what we know took place during remote learning. But as it relates to this school year specifically, we know that we had to make some adjustments to our school calendar after the start of school had already occurred and that those days were really intended to address the challenges that our, our staff was facing around teaching students both in person and remotely at the same time, dealing with and being prepared to transition back and forth between learning in person and remote and all of those things that, that really led us to a place where we needed time for our staff to, to be able to, you know, have some opportunities to collaborate with peers and to really build out this programming. And so, as a result of all of that, and I won't go through like the specific dates, but we went back to, to really capture just how many days did that really represent? And to be honest, you know, it's like shocking when you see it in person, you know, when you like see it all together in one place. So, for this calendar year up to, like through the end of the school year, so taking into account days that we have scheduled between now and the end of the school year, we have had 24 WOW days. And those really represent, the acronym for that meant Wolves Online Working. So, those were days where teachers provided instructional activities for students to be able to complete independently. Those would have been days they weren't in school. In addition to those 24 WOW days, there were an additional nine days of remote learning. So, those days were in November and in, or in January, like the first week of January and then like November 30th through December 4th. So, that was an additional nine days. Teachers were teaching those days live, but those were days that students were not in person at school. And in addition to that, through the month of December, we had those cohort days where at the middle school, at the elementary and middle school, students attended in person for two of the days. They were participating in remote learning the other two. And then that Wednesday was a day that was essentially a WOW day for them. And so, if you count, if you capture those days, it ended up being. it ended up being a total of 33 total days where students were either, you know, where they were not at school, which account, which is essentially six weeks and two days' worth of instruction. Like, to me, when I think like, huh, six weeks, like, that's a lot. That's a dramatic number of days. And that doesn't take into account any, you know, days that individual students may have been quarantined, unable to attend school, you know, for other reasons. And so like, that is something that we clearly recognize as a district has contributed greatly to many of the challenges that we have that, you know, that we've talked about here. And so our calendar next year is not anything at all remotely related to what the calendar this year has looked, has looked like. It's really more thinking about to like the year before that, and even really the year before that because last year we had, you know, the spring learning. So really, in contrast to, you know, the 33 total days this year, next year, we're looking at a calendar that would, and I'm not taking into account the, before school days when students wouldn't have been here or anything like that. It's a total of nine days. And four of those days were days previously scheduled. Those are days that, you know, follow, like a February day before, you know, a holiday weekend, et cetera, you know, those sorts of days. So the additional days, those additional five days, we really attempted to find those days that fell in times that would, that would really be natural, either breaks, like that would build off of time that would naturally have already been a time that maybe families would have chosen to, you know, try to take an extended holiday or something like that. So three of those days were the December 20th, 21st, and 22nd, which for students essentially extends their winter holiday to two full weeks. And then there was one additional day in October. We had previously scheduled an October 8th date. And so we added October 11th, which is the Monday following that date. So that's sort of like a fall break kind of concept. And then one additional day in January, January 14th, which is the Friday before the Martin Luther King holiday in January. So we feel like we were trying to, trying really hard to strike a balance so that we could address what we know will be additional challenges around planning for extended learning and learning recovery, but also recognizing that no one wants to have a school calendar that looks like this year had to look. And so I feel as if we really are, I think everyone right now just feels that like, you know, just real palpable, like, and as a parent of four children myself, who are all school-aged, I feel that same, you know, panic myself as I think about like opportunities for them not to learn at school. So we feel like we're really, we really are addressing those concerns in ways that really do recognize the challenges that our families have faced. So I don't know if you have any questions about that, but I really, I did want to bring that to your attention and just kind of illustrate how if we're thinking about it in relation to this calendar, this calendar, and the thought that like, huh, you're adding more days? Like, what, are you kidding me? That that's really not what we're, what we're doing.
I'll add just a few things. When it comes to our elementary staff in particular, one thing that I want to call to everyone's attention is really what we've been going without for many, many years. When specials were not part of the regular rhythm, that means there was just pockets of time where the elementary teachers were given the planning time that they need to maximize and do the very best in the classroom. Having to skip by on planning and collaboration time where you're investing in learning, where you're analyzing data, where you're using that information to then personalize the instruction for the students. When that is cut into, it's a huge challenge. And that has been a challenge that's been carried by the elementary teachers for years that we are looking to rectify in our upward and onward, or onward and upward plan. But that is something that, you know, sometimes we, you know, you just, you do what you have to do, and you make it work. And that's what our staff does and is excellent at doing. But in general, our elementary teachers go without what exists in most districts. And this is what we're trying to change. And so some of it, it really is hard. Because I've been on the phone trying to explain it to some parents, just trying to help explain the gap from when you have to present everything that you do face-to-face on paper, replicate it online so that somebody could tune in from home. Those are, that's a lot of extra steps. And when there's no time carved in your day because you're always with students, it creates a challenge. So I'm not here to whine. I'm here to advocate for the challenges of 21st century learning and 21st century teaching and the amazing work that our students, our parents, and our families, and our staff has done together. It has been a tremendous heavy lift. And I'm extremely proud of everyone. We've learned a lot, and we're only going to be better for it. We keep saying, we're going to have invested in this. We're going to come out better on the other side. It is true. I was meeting with elementary students this week, as well as some middle school and high school students, or sorry, two weeks ago. And they said, you know what? Through all the hardships that we went through last spring, like, we feel more mature, Mrs. Adams. We feel like we're smarter. We feel like we're more independent. Those are the kinds of words that they use to say, when you're thrown into the fire, like everyone has been, good things can come of that. And so I just want to emphasize, this calendar is not something that we look at lightly. And as you could tell from Mrs. Preston's description, we have gone through lots of details to find that balance in investing in our teachers, developing and growing them so that we can deliver stronger and better results in our classroom because that's what this is all about. Every investment that we're making, every decision that we're making right now is all about improving academic, social-emotional outcomes for our students. And we believe this plan that we're sharing tonight, as well as this calendar, will help us get there further faster.
Yeah, and I would just like add one more thing about the calendar, specifically the dates. An additional need for the dates that we have scheduled for April and May are related to our requirement to administer assessments to our students who are attending, who are part of WCOA. Those must be administered face-to-face. And so like, in order to bring 1,700 students into our buildings and maintain any sort of social distancing, have the staff available to support testing, we needed to add those additional days to accommodate that testing as well. And so that really was a, was an additional driver in needing to have those days.
That's true.
My one question is around that January the 14th date that was added in. My only concern as a, as a previous parent of students is that they're off for two weeks in December, and then they come back on the 3rd, and then they go through the 13th, and then they're off for four days. So there's like nine days.
Well, I will say the reason that we added that, that was something that we really looked at. That day coincides with the end of the quarter, the end of the semester as well. And so for the purposes of really being able to have, have a day where staff can really be like wrapping up the semester and, you know, work related to that, we tried to see like, could we end the semester before break? And like, could we attach one of those days? And I know, I know that Mr. Perry would say this as well. You would think that you could move one day, and it would just like not be a thing. But it's like a significant thing that we attempted, but really couldn't come to a place where it made sense. It would completely like, give a lack of balance to our first and second semesters and other challenges. And then there wouldn't be a day at the end of the semester. It just, there were a lot of things. So it really, I agree with you, but it sort of was like the lesser of two evils.
So the high school exams would be over on the 13th?
They would be finished.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So when you mentioned that right now you'd have to bring 1,700 students in for that testing and then not be able to reasonably accommodate the social distancing and all of that good stuff, the technology. What's the plan for next year if we continue that WCOA program? Are you hoping that the restrictions for social distancing and things like that will not be a factor? Or do you anticipate possibly adding some to accommodate that testing?
Yeah, I think that it's, I mean, social distancing is one, is like one small factor of that as it relates to the spring specifically. It's more a matter of, I mean, in some cases, because of how space is being used, like not having enough space at all because of needing to have rooms for quarantine rooms and, you know, other reasons that have popped up as a result of this. And so it's really like literally not having spaces for people to go that, you know, right now, if you remember back to our presentation, I think it was last time where we looked at some of our building facility usage maps. We've accounted for, we're building plans off of everyone being back in the building face-to-face and having spaces available for all the people to be in all the places. And then knowing that, you know, it's likely not every student would, and so being able to accommodate for that. So that's been part of what we've built into our plan for next year as well. As well as like letting our families know that if WCOA is going to be a thing that you're going to choose, you also need to know there are going to be times that your students will need to be in the building. And to just like plan for that and to know that that will be a requirement, which, you know, right now is something that some families don't feel super comfortable with, but knowing like it's going to have to, have to be a thing. So I hope that addresses your question.
Can you elaborate just a little bit more on the, touching on the January? I mean, this is all, excuse me, this is, it seems to have always been the case where we have a break, and then we come back for a week or two and then end a semester or something. But, and I think we tried experimenting where we pushed the start date earlier in August to have the semester end before break and then come back after break to start a new semester to kind of reduce the learning gap or the learning drain. And what kind of challenge is that to accommodate that?
I think right now, trying to realistically be ready for the start of school prior to August 19th would be really challenging, given all of what, and I'll share a little bit about summer programming and things that we have planned for that, not only for June, but also for August. I think that, you know, this is the first time actually, like for so many years, we've been opening new buildings and transitioning people from one building to the next. And so we needed to have additional time on the front end of the calendar to accommodate for that. So this actually, the fact that we only have three days prior to the start of school is less than what we've had in at least several years. So I think it's, you know, our desire to like strike that balance between being able to, like our, we feel like the best days for instruction are front-loaded. Like, the longer the school year goes into May and, you know, June, like, everybody's like getting itchy and ready to, you know, not be in school. And so we do desire to start as early as we feel like we're ready to do. But I do think that given all of what's required now to start up school especially, as we're coming off of, you know, post-pandemic learning and all of the plans that need to be put in place because of that, I think it would be practically impossible, from my personal opinion. And I feel like I'm speaking on behalf of others. That would be really hard to do. So I don't know if I just move on to my presentation now.
The superintendent recommends the revised 21-22 calendar be approved as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chumley, in a second?
Second.
Mrs. Delaney? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Chumley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion approved.
And item 7.02 is also an update from Mrs. Preston with the West Claremont Online Academy, the evolution of where we are to date and what we plan for summer learning.
So I think you have to be my Vienna over there.
It's okay, I'll do this.
Sorry about that. Okay, so the first thing that I wanted to provide you with an overview is regarding the state's requirement that districts submit, and their language is a recovery and extended learning plan. I will go, you know, on record as saying, it didn't take the state requiring this for us to already have been building plans for this to happen. And so submitting our plan to the state is like more a formality. But this is all, this has been work that we've been thinking about and planning for, you know, long before the governor like thought it was a great idea to think about, how are you going to address learning losses that have resulted, you know, from all of this? So I just wanted to provide you with a high level of, you know, from like a 30,000-foot view of the kind of information that we plan to include as part of our plan that we'll submit to the state. So one of the areas that you have to address is how are you going to figure out the academic and the social-emotional needs of students? What kind of information are you going to use to help you determine what the needs really are? And so this is just some, I feel like we're one slide too far maybe.
One slide ahead or behind?
You're ahead.
You're ahead one.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. So you have to be able to share information about how are you going to determine the needs of students? And so these are just examples of the types of, like, the variety of ways that we'll be working to address that. So whether it's through benchmark assessments that we would administer in the fall, in the winter, and again now in the spring, if we would be looking at common assessment data, that would be, that is part of like locally created assessments that we administer, progress monitoring data at the middle school and the high school level, looking at grades or at the high school credits that students have earned, looking at disengagement student data. So we've been collecting information over the course of the year just about like who's not with us. And for the most part, those students we see most often in our online academy as students who we just are not, you know, are just not engaging regularly. And so looking at, what does that tell us about students and their potential academic and social-emotional needs, as well as collecting information about individual students for them to be able to self-report, like what their, you know, needs may be. And others, but those are like our primary sources that we'll be using, that we are using and will continue to use. So like, okay, you get this information. And so now, what are we intending to include as part of our plan? And I will say that the requirements for the plan include information not only about this summer, but also information about the next two school years. Because we recognize that it's not something that like summer programming, you know, two to four weeks of summer programming is like magically going to be able to solve. This is going to take significant effort over, you know, an extended period of time over the course of next school year and the following year. And we're hoping to be as exponentially, you know, for this to help students as exponentially as possible. But I want you to know, the state recognizes, they're expecting and anticipating this work to carry over beyond just, you know, what can happen in a summer. And so some of the things that we are including as part of our plan will be summer programming. And in addition to summer learning program, looking at special education recovery services additionally. We know that students, many of our special education students were not able to receive services because of remote learning. And so in that case, we'd be offering those recovery services. We'll be looking at ways to extend learning over the course of the next few school years. And so an example of what that might look like could be, you know, at the elementary level, if school is set to end at 3:00, part of what we're examining is the opportunity for students to stay for an additional, you know, 45 minutes to an hour where they can receive an additional, like on top of what they would have already received at school, an additional layer of targeted support. They might have with their teacher, you know, an opportunity to, you know, get a snack and ideally, like get a ride home. So, you know, there are costs associated with that and part of what we're looking at are SOR funds to be able to support. So that's like one example of something that would be part of our extended learning programming. You know, continuing to strengthen our multi-tiered systems of support, and again, a layering of support, so really solid core instruction, tier-one instruction, and in addition to that, for students who need an additional layer of support, building those in and really continuing to strengthen what happens there and how we monitor the progress that students are making. Strengthening and equipping our building leadership teams to be able Strengthening and equipping our building leadership teams to be able to make data informed decisions, to have the finger, like at their fingertips, the kind of data that they need to be able to make those smart decisions and not spending all their time just like trying to collect the information, but working as a system to be able to strengthen our ability to provide that information with them and to support them in knowing what to do with it. Investing in instructional coaching, looking at whole child supports. So addressing some of those social emotional learning needs. And we'll do that through our partnerships that we have already in place with Child Focus, as well as potentially expanding partnerships and really just getting clearer about the ways that we can wrap around students. Can you all see that? So I don't, so a little bit more of what we're thinking as it relates to summer programming. So at the, across our elementary and middle school, we're going to be looking at summer school programming that extends over the course of the month of June. And it would be our hope and part of what we'll communicate with families, that we'd love for them to make a two-week commitment. That we think anything less than two weeks is not going to be enough time to have had any significant impact of any sort. I don't know that we'll turn down anybody who says they can only make it for a week, you know. But as we're building out our programming, it's also going to be hard if we have kids like bouncing in and out and they're here for a week and then they're off and then they're back. So it, it would be our desire that they would be able to be there for, you know, two of those four weeks. We're looking at like an eight thirty to noon kind of time, providing students with both breakfast and lunch, as well as transportation to and from, all of which are things that we've never offered as part of summer programming before. And previously, much if not all of our summer programming, at least for our general education students, really focused on our students who are at risk for not meeting the requirements for the third grade guarantee. And so we're really broadening our reach and providing a significant amount of time that we would be able to, to support students. We would primarily focus in literacy and math. And that's not to say that there won't be times built in for students to do other things. But in terms of our, what we would be working to, to close gaps, it would be around literacy and math. And we're looking at offering this free of charge. And again, it's really because of the SOR funds that have been designed and allowed for these purposes that we would be able to do that. At the high school level, we would be focusing primarily on credit recovery. And, you know, you all know, we know that we need students to, to be able to graduate. And so we're, we're looking at credit recovery across two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. In the past, we found more success with having a small charge associated with this, partially because the experience has been that without it, families and students don't take it as seriously. And so having a little bit of like financial skin in the game, so to speak, really does, we've had experience that has shown us that that does make a difference in just building that, you know, like seriousness level of that. And so that's what we're looking at there. And in addition, it's not captured here, but we would also be offering a July session for students who, you know, we, we have gotten information that juniors and seniors this year will be able to earn instead of, in lieu of points for their end of course exam, they will be able to use the grade conversion. And so it's, before we knew that, it was still a thought that we would need students to have an opportunity to test in July. We still want to make that opportunity available. And as part of that, we would offer kind of a leading up to that sort of review session. So that's not captured there, but that would be something that I believe we would still want to make available. And, you know, provide some information maybe for students that, that might want to take advantage of that.
Can I ask a question about that slide?
Uh huh.
So you're, you're thinking or considering doing K eight at no charge to the families?
Mm-hmm.
And charging nine through 12. What if you had a parent that had both a middle schooler and a high schooler? How do you justify the explanation that one child would not have that?
I think the other part that I didn't address is that for summer school at nine through 12, we also use a purchased service called Apex, which is an online curriculum that does have a cost, a significant cost associated with it. At the elementary level, it's all going to be district created things, and so there isn't that additional cost. And so that's really where that money, and it doesn't at all cover the full cost of the seat license, but it at least gets us, you know, the seat licenses are around probably $150 a student. And so really that's, that's the, the other significant reason for, for that cost.
Is the nine 12 summer programming, is that completely virtual?
No, students would come into, so what we've done in the past that again has, I think served us well is that initially, all students come face to face for that. And they have the opportunity, because it is using an online platform, they have the ability to continue working when they're not present. And so generally, the teacher of that course kind of will work to strike a deal with students to say, you know what, if you can demonstrate X, Y, Z progress, I'm fine with you, you know, continuing to work at home for these days, knowing that they have to come in to have quizzes and tests, you know, proctored in person. So those are things that we try to reserve some flexibility for students, especially students who may have work schedules that they're trying to accommodate or needs to, you know, support younger siblings at home. We really do try to be understanding about that, but initially, we really are, you know, which is part of why we have like an AM PM session, trying to also be a little bit more accommodating for schedules that students, you know, may have to, to juggle.
And then with the K eight, if we're providing transportation, are we, would we be able to be flexible with pickup and drop off? So if a family has typically in the summer, they have their child that goes to a camp or a, a daycare center or something. Is there, is there opportunity for us to be flexible to where if we pick them up from home in the morning, can they be dropped off at a daycare camp that they normally would be, have been going for, for the summer? Or are we going to be restricted?
Well, I think, yeah, I was going to say, I think like right now, just the idea of providing transportation, like building out brand new routes for students that haven't yet registered. We're not sure if this is going to be like 50 kids or like 500 kids and, you know, what parts of town they're from and all of those things. I feel like it's too early to say with certainty, but I can imagine like we wouldn't want to get in the business of like, you know, busing like one kid to one place and, you know, another kid to a place and all those sorts of things. So I think we're just going to have to see how this develops over time. But for sure, you know, we're, we're, and part of what we haven't really fully developed yet, but as if, you know, we for example, had students who might be doing a camp at the health plex. You know, trying to figure out a way we could like partner with them to create like an AM PM, you know, sort of session. Things like that are part of what we've had some conversation about, that until we really know who's in and what barriers might keep people from like saying they're in, like I'd love to be in, but, you know, sorts of things like what you're describing, I think we might have a better picture of whether or not we'd be able to figure some of that out.
So, so there is the opportunity to where, I mean, some of the K eight programming wouldn't necessarily be at their homeschool. So a child that goes to Merwin, I mean, maybe there is some classes at Merwin, but, you know, that maybe like you said, that, you know, if there's a way that we can partner with the health plex, that maybe some of this program is, is done at the high school. And then they can do camp or whatever at the health plex after.
Yeah, and that, and that's, and that's part of what, you know, we are going to need to examine once we know, like have firm numbers or firmer numbers for who really is interested, is then being able to identify. All right, how many sites like would make sense? You know, because also at the same time, over the entire month of June, that's when our building custodial staff is like trying, like that's a significant go time for them. And so to think like a bunch of, you know, kids are going to be like in the space for the whole month poses challenges for them. So these are all the things that we're, you know, over the course of April and May, going to have to really create the details for. But those are absolutely the, the variables that we're trying to have plans to address. Absolutely. Any other questions about summer school part?
Is this, are there stipulations or is this available for anyone who wants to take advantage?
Anyone who take, wants to take advantage, absolutely. And, you know, part of the conversations that building principals and, and teachers could be and hopefully will be having with families over the course of, you know, the, these last few months of school is really helping build awareness for the opportunities that are available. You know, we know that sometimes the students who don't really have a significant need for it are likely the ones who will take advantage of it, and the reverse of that is not always true. And so really trying to encourage those families who, who may in the past have, you know, overlooked this or, or, or transportation would have been a barrier. I mean, that's also a significant part of why we've wanted to include food as well as transportation is because I, I think that we've heard loud and clear in the past that those, especially transportation, could be significant barriers, like I'd love for my kid to do that, but like I'm at work and there's no way I can get them there or whatever it might be. So we're hoping that can allow this to be an opportunity that many more students could take advantage of than, than in the past.
Can I add on to Michael's comment? As far as opening this up to anyone, I mean, is this only for West Claremont students? Or is it potential that someone who may have been homeschooled, that this is an opportunity for them as well? Or someone who might be open enrollment out to somewhere else, this is available to them? Or someone who might go to a parochial school who's not offering this? I mean, it, I mean, I know that these are the cans of worms that we're opening and I, you know, I apologize, but.
That's okay. I, I think our initial thought was to like, let's offer it to our, our students and see what kind of interest we get.
Sure.
You know, and then maybe I think, because also part of this is like our capacity to do this. We recognize that, you know, it's not like all of us in this room are going to be the ones, you know, providing all this instruction. And so part of it is our capacity and really wanting to maximize our capacity. And, and to be able to have that like as wide as that within our district first. And then we'll just kind of, you know, I think have to take it from there.
And this is something that would not be funded by the state, correct?
We would be using some of those relief funds as a way to, to offset these costs.
And that's where I was going with it, if we opened it too far and had far many more students than what we could reasonably handle and we had to have more teaching staff and things like that, the cost could make it unaffordable.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think so.
With transportation and then food and, you know, stacked up.
Yeah. And then keeping track of like, are you one of ours? Are you like somebody else? Like who are you? You know, they're, they're also.
Who gets those grades and who gets the, you know, the report on those students?
I think it's something we can just continue to look at because really all the kids in our school district are our kids, you know, ultimately. And how could we, this, this could be a partnership that could be a beneficial thing. I think there's still so many unknowns that we don't have, until we really get a sense of the staff who raise their hand and say, yes, I'm committing to this, we've just still got a lot to work through in April. But I think you guys are raising great things for us to consider as we continue to evolve and, and serve our students.
Absolutely, and I would say too that, you know, we're hoping that this isn't just like what we're doing this summer. We really hope that it's the beginning of us being able to consider ways that we can continue learning opportunities beyond just the, you know, the traditional school days. So we want this to be successful. We want to, to do it well and to be able to continue to grow and build on this experience for the future as well.
Excuse my ignorance here, but I know this is probably mainly for students who want to catch up or whatever, but would students be able to take advantage to the grade they're going to, like in preparation for?
Absolutely, and I will also say that what I didn't add there that will be like a part of this, we're working with our gifted intervention specialists to build out some enrichment experiences as well. So that, you know, there will be opportunities for students who from a learning loss standpoint or from a, you know, closing the gap standpoint, may not have, you know, significant gaps. But we, our goal really is like to keep as many students with active minds over the course of the summer. And again, like speaking as a parent of four kids, 12 and under, like, you know, it's super exciting those first couple of weeks. And then you're like, are you kidding me? Like, oh my goodness, enough technology or whatever. So really just trying to provide opportunities for families and for students to remain engaged in things that are of interest to them. We don't want this to feel like, ugh, more school, like the thing that I'm like not good at or struggle with or like, oh, boring. And so we're really trying to address some of those engagement factors as we're building out programming. And again, as a way of trying to really incentivize continuing to learn. We'll be working in partnership with our buildings. Many of our buildings already have some like summer learning incentives. And so it might be through partnership with the library where it's like, you know, you read X number of books and you bring, you know, a certificate in and like you get entered into a raffle or you get to have popsicles with the principal or whatever it might be. And so we're also going to be working to, you know, just have some of those things in place, even for students who don't commit and, or can't commit to coming face to face, just to again, keep them interested and actively engaged, their mind actively engaged over the summer. Okay, so an update on WCOA. When we spoke last, I, you know, communicated that we were really still like up in the fences or up in the air, not up in the fence, up in the air, still on the fence, up in the air as it related to thinking about grades K three. And based on taking a, a closer look at what we know about students who are in grades K three, what we know from a student engagement standpoint, from a, looking at their like literacy and math assessments, and really having conversation with, conversations with our teachers to say like, all right, we had to, we did this this year, really as a response to the pandemic. Moving forward, do we really see K three being something that we would want to have part of like our forever future, you know, WCOA? Because we're at a place where we're really wanting every decision that we make be moving us more towards that like longer term vision. And so we really got to a place where it, it's our recommendation to only offer face to face learning for grades K three. That the challenges around students who are not reader, who are non-readers, many of them, especially grades K and one, some still, you know, in second grade, the need for a, a learning coach is the phrase from this year, who really is working alongside of students in many cases. And some of the challenges that that has posed for, for families who like initially thought that was going to be something that, that they could pull off, that then they haven't, and, you know, all of the other factors that go along with that. It's our plan to really only offer this in grades four, 12. And what we want to know though is, and as part of our survey that we'll send out to families right after spring break, is trying to communicate that information, trying to say that, that we really feel like it's really only in response to health concerns. And so wanting to know right now, like how many families feel like, how many families with students who will be in grades K three next year, who really feel strongly that because of potential health concerns, that they would really like to choose that option for their student, just as a way of trying to gather that information. If it's five families, you know, five students, that's one thing and, and one, that's one problem to potentially solve. If it's 65, that's, you know, maybe another situation and we might have to, to revisit that. This, it's not our goal to like send a lot of people, you know, out of here. It's really our goal to communicate that from an educational standpoint, we believe that this is the best way for our K three students to learn. And, and, you know, again, to just try to collect some information to see if, if there are any families that we might need to, you know, just be mindful of. And then across grades four, eight, similar to this year, those students would be kind of scheduled separately. They wouldn't be embedded necessarily into the face to face. You know, they would, they would sort of live separate from that. But at the high school level, as part of just the course selection process, similar to, as we talked about before, similar to like a college scheduling process, students will have the opportunity to, to schedule one or like a full load of online courses, you know, just depending on their interests and their schedules, et cetera. And so all of that will happen, that scheduling process at the high. And so all of that will happen, that scheduling process at the high school level will, will happen in April. And then again, our, we will be moving away from the curriculum that we purchased this year and we feel like our, we'll be able to provide a high quality and higher quality learning experience for students by building out our courses using SchoolAGR learning management system. And those courses will be aligned with our instructional frameworks that all of our students, whether you're face to face or online, would be working with.
I know that, I have a first grader and a third grader and I can tell you that when they were in a remote learning atmosphere, my third grader did fine, but my first grader struggled, struggled and it, it struggled to maintain the attention and, I mean, he even, I mean, he's, his desk is three feet away from mine, working from home. And it's still, it's, you know, you know, he's sitting in the chair like this.
Squirreled, yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, it's, it, it was hard for, you know, kindergarten last year at the end of the year when we went to this, and first grade this year and it just, I mean, my third grader was, you know, was okay with it, but I can see how that still is, that's right at that threshold.
Yeah. And I will say, again, from my parent perspective, last year, in the spring, I had a first grader and a third grader. And the same thing, I just thought, oh goodness, this first, like I just don't even know what is going on right now. And, you know, as my husband's working, I'm working, we're all like trying to do our thing, there were just many days that I thought like, I can't worry about it. I just, I can only do so much. And so like from that firsthand experience, there really is a dramatic difference between the grades, so.
So, and then with the high school, when you're talking about it just be part of the schedule selection, so, I mean, would it be like certain sections of the same course? Like, you know, algebra, you know, there's a section, the same algebra class is offered online as offered in school and that they'd have a choice that, to take one or the other?
Yeah. And, and we'll be, we're finalizing actually in a meeting tomorrow, or Wednesday, finalizing what all of our like scheduling sheet's gonna look like, what all of that information, so we can communicate with families and students so they kind of know exactly what their options are and what that will look like for what their day would, you know, look like. And so that it, we can kind of create some clear pictures of possibilities for students to consider.
Very good, thank you.
I don't think that's all, that all we have? Oh, lick steps, there's one more slide. Yeah. So, so just work that's ahead of us. So as I sort of started, we have to submit our recovery and extended learning plan to the state by April first and I will link for you as part of our regular communication. I'll share that finalized draft with you all, so you can, you know, be aware of that. And then first week of April, when we get back from spring break, it is full steam ahead as it relates to building out the details for all of these things. And that's gonna really start with sending out a, you know, district survey to our families where we're gonna be getting information from them about summer school, ways for them to register, WCOA, are you, you know, in or out? Looking at other enrollment information that Dr. Foltz, we're combining these things into one so that we're not just like killing people with a bunch of, you know, requests for information, but information about do you plan to return to the district? You know, yes or no, that, those sorts of things, so we can just have a better picture of, of who wants what and so that we can really begin like working through the very nitty gritty details of that. And then at the April twelfth board meeting, I'll give you an update about like what we've learned since then. We won't, you know, we'll have some of that initial data back from the surveys and we'll be able to give you some more information about what things are looking like.
And I know, again, as first grader and a third grade parent, it's, I mean, it's this time now that we have to plan for, for our family for summer, what are we doing for summer? Because, I mean, a lot of programs fill up, you know, Cincinnati Nature Center, you know, they offer great programming, but hey, guess what? They're already full.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta join, you gotta, you know, look at them in February. So, I mean, yeah, I think, yeah, the sooner the, the better for sure.
Yeah. And I will say that, you know, like moving forward, it would, once we, you know, know how to, what this is all gonna look like, those things could happen sooner, but like this is all literally just happening as quickly, as quickly as we can. But absolutely, we like, that is like first thing on the docket for when we return from, from break.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item seven point oh three is the onward and upward investment plan that we've been referring to. And as Dan gets that up, as you know, since January, we have been bringing to you updates on, on our academic performance, where we stand with enrollment, facilities, our staffing plan, our financial health. And we've been trying to give a pre-COVID, post-COVID kind of view of that and have discussed possible steps. And we've been inching toward that all year long. And then as, as the months have continued to go by, we've gotten a clearer picture of the kind of relief funds that are available to us. So we're dubbing this maximizing of our relief funds, the onward and upward investment plan. And we wanna take you through just the details of that. And as Mrs. Preston mentioned, there are several still details that will continue to be, to unfold as we wrap up this week and move into the time after spring break. Where should I point, Larry?
Uh, Teresa. Mr. Romano, appreciate it.
Okay, maybe, maybe it's not turned on. Oh, there we go, we made it. Okay. You'll recall this slide from our February State of the School presentation. It's the visual to not only show that there is a big impact and disruption through COVID. After we were having positive momentum, things were looking up, we were having stronger academic performance, things were starting to come together, we had the strong plan, boom, the March setback with COVID and the unknowns. And that squiggly line there really represents opportunity gaps, learning gaps and equity gaps that exist in our district. And just to kind of remind everybody, already in our district, we start, when our students come into kindergarten, forty-five percent of them are ready for kindergarten. The rest, we have to get there. And so we already have a steep kind of curve that we have to overcome from the very beginning. And so what this really represents is not only do we always have a challenge and do we always have some gaps, we have extra gaps that exist because of COVID. And what we have to do and what we have to accomplish is to get back on track so that we can address the learning loss. And it's gonna take really all of us working together. It's gonna take the combination of families working to try to keep summer learning in their own homes to the best of their, our ability, our ability to offer some programming and to everyone kind of keep their eye on that prize of, of keeping our students engaged and interested in learning. And, you know, and some of our feedback that we got from families, people are like, people need a break. And we get that and we know our staff needs a break and we certainly wanna provide that. But we, we need to continue to rally around and understand kind of the basic needs in literacy, numeracy and technology that our students need to be successful. So since December, you can't really see the detail of this page and it's not, that's not really what's important here. It's, since December, we've been gathering perception data. We've, we've sent out surveys regarding our communication, we've sent out climate and culture surveys, and we've also sent to our staff just some surveys in response to the State of the Schools messaging that we shared. And we've gotten a variety of information back. You can actually go on our website and get the detail of what's behind all of this data. But what we've done is take this information to help us really uncover and solidify the pain points that exist in our school system and so that when we look at the investments that are coming our way through the relief funds, how can we take the information that we know is a pain point in a classroom for a student or for a staff member or for a family and gear our investments toward improving the conditions? And so the onward and upward investment plan is really meant to help us accelerate learning and close the learning gaps. And we want to invest over the next three years and maximize the support that we're getting from the CARES and the ESR funds that Dan will go into, into more depth in a little bit, so that we can address gaps that we already have that have gotten bigger because of COVID in some really critical ways and some foundational ways. In our minds, there's really not shiny objects that we're bringing forward to you. We are bringing core pieces of teaching and learning that are essential for students. And so we, we're excited about the possibilities. And so what you'll see here over the next couple of slides are just by level in our school system, what we plan to invest in over the course of the next couple of years. And so what you'll see for elementary is cultural arts for every student at least four days a week. That's a huge improvement from about eight to twelve days a, a month to four days a week. We'll be expanding our continuum of services for special education and this will include teacher positions that will be added, additional peer professional staff for support as well as school psychologists. We will be able to expand our gifted services and enrichment. So, right now, we're able to work on that really heavily and fourth and fifth grade will be able to expand some services and some gifted enrichment, second through fifth grade. The assistant principal will be, right now, we, we share, and so an assistant principal travels from building to building through the combination of some full-time assistant principals and some full-time teacher leaders. We'll be able to kind of flank the, the principal of the building with some full-time support that will allow them to better perform their role as instructional leaders. We have the summer learning as mentioned. We're going to be modernizing our curriculum and we'll start with math, that'll be pre-K five. We're gonna be adding some qualified mental health specialists. We all know that not only are our students dealing with the academic challenges that have been faced since March of last year till now, but they've been challenged with just the, the sense of disconnect, the sense of isolation, missing the friends and even the students, and I'm gonna do a piece for you guys as part of our next work session is to share a little bit more about student voice, but just to give you some hints, even though we've been in school face to face and everyone's giving their best foot forward, there's just things that are lacking, like kids, I'm just sad that we can't be in groups in the way that we used to. Or I just miss so much coming to the library and being able to do what we normally do. So, as much as all the efforts and we have been putting into this and moving forward have been wonderful and they, they've been really above and beyond what many school districts have been able to do across the state and across the nation, there's still something lacking and that lacking goes back to kind of that social emotional experience in school and that sense of connectedness and feeling a part of something that kids are, they're, they're really creative in how they kind of put their finger on it and describe it to you. But it just shows that sense of, and I, and I've shared this with you before, where kids will say, you know, I've, I'm around kids all day, but I've never felt more alone. And it's the separation from the mask even that just makes the learning a little bit hampered, a little bit different. And, and so that whole mental health piece will need to be, continued to be attacked from many different angles. Sometimes it's just giving them some free time, just, they're like, we just like some time just to like be with our friends and just not be like staring at a computer or listening to a teacher. They, they need a balance in, in how they, how they go about their business. We're gonna be able to add a library aide that will be dedicated at the elementary schools and then we'll be able to have one at secondary. And we'll be expanding instructional specialists. So we keep talking about the investments that we wanna make and things such as math curriculum. Well, we don't wanna just go make a purchase, drop it off at the teacher's door and say, okay, here, good luck. There has to be strong implementation plans and support plans so that we're able to cover core tier one instruction as well as the intervention enrichments that need, that go along with a comprehensive approach. And so that's gonna take investments in specialists. It's going to also take investments in being able to integrate math and technology. We don't see that as separate. And so we gotta figure out how do we better engage and perform at a high level? So we're not just turning worksheets into something you do on a computer, but we're providing higher level thinking and opportunities through effective technology use. And, and now that we'll be able to have professional development on a stronger schedule for our elementary teachers specifically, they'll be able to get job embedded support. So you're not waiting for a professional day or doing it in the eleventh hour of the day. It's able to be job supported along with your colleagues in a collaborative setting that makes all the learning more effective. For our secondary supports, we're gonna be adding special education case managers to the day-to-day operations of, of the school, modernizing our curriculum, starting with math there as well, six through twelve. A really big key for personalizing the pathways, you know, we talk a lot about students enrolling, employing or enlisting, and there are now more and more ways to, to graduate from high school. And so to have a personalized plan and not a one-size-all fits plan, you need more of that personalized attention from the counselor viewpoint. So there's gonna be two added at the middle school and two added at the high school to reduce that ratio of counselor to student. Summer learning will also be available for the high school, the library aide, as I mentioned. We're gonna provide some middle school cafeteria monitors, some things that the kids really like and that the staff really likes at the middle school, is their ability to make that large middle school feel smaller. And they've been able to do that through creating a few more intimate lunchroom settings. So instead of three cafeterias, we, I think we have about five now, five different locations. And that was like a COVID reaction, COVID response that everyone really likes. It, it, it just helps the atmosphere. And so we need some additional bodies to, to help support that. Expansion of instructional specialists, as I said, to help us with job embedded professional development to increase everyone's ability in literacy, numeracy and technology. And we're also working to add a West Claremont High School assistant activities slash athletic director to manage all the activities and athletics that exist there. It's a large campus. We are, you know, one of the largest schools in the ECC and we're, we're one of, well, all of them have assistants in this role and we don't, so we're, we're needing to add, invest in that. Support our programming and support our students being, you know, connected to school. The district-wide supports, first and foremost are for us to recruit and maintain the most qualified staff. We are repurposing a position, that's an administrative position, to director of secondary teaching and learning. We have the assistant director, director of technology kind of being, kind of reimagined. Maintenance and grounds addition, that's a position that, you know, once was the head custodian of Brantner as Brantner dissolved and as we had all the OFCC projects going, there was like less of a need. But now that those OFCC supports are, are going away as projects are buttoning up, we have a wider footprint and more grounds keeping to take care of. Educator stipends, we, Ellie gave an example tonight about maybe extending the school day as a way to invest in our students. This would be an example of an educator stipend. Also, Dave was asking about, will, would this be an online version of algebra and a face-to-face version? Well, in some of those courses, we're gonna want some teacher-created courses and so we would invest in our staff building those in our learning management system, SchoolAG. Mrs. Preston tonight gave a version of the WCOA and a kind of like initially like where we are and it will continue to evolve and kind of be tweaked and finalized as we get data back from our families in April. So you'll hear more of that at, at the next work session. We're gonna be upgrading our data infrastructure and that is really ultimately about us knowing our students better. We need to know them from an academic standpoint, a social emotional standpoint, as well as demographics, what their needs are, kind of in a dashboard kind of setting so that we can be more efficient, more effective in responding to their needs. And finally, we're gonna be converting a, the contact tracing position to a teaching and learning administrative support as part of this plan. What we'll do now is kind of turn it over to Dan to talk about, okay, so we, we just spent the year, all of last year, talking about the levy for learning and how we were passing a levy that was gonna maintain our, our current level of programs and services and we were going to stabilize. And now with this new opportunity with the COVID relief funds, we are adding some things that we, we never imagined that we'd be able to do at this point. And so Mr. Romano is going to explain how that's possible and, and how we plan to be stewards of this resource.
Thanks for attending items. Two slides here, but in actually prior presentations, we actually had them reversed, but thought it might be more appropriate to talk about first, where, where's the funding coming from, that we're gonna do this investment with and how can we do it? So first of all, and I think it's my eighth month, month here and it's probably at least the eighth time that I've said it publicly, but we do plan and intend on keeping our commitment from that 2020 levy that we're gonna remain funded through FY24. That's utmost out in front of us and that's kind of a pillar that we financially said that we're gonna behold to and so we're gonna keep that always in front of us as we go forward. So where are some of the funds coming from? Local revenue, the property tax valuation this past year in 2020, county auditor did a reappraisal of all the property within our school district, in fact, within the county. And as we did our projection of, of what we thought that would yield us, the valuations increased more than expected. Most of you will know that when valuations go up, if we're under the, the rules of the game for. Most of you will know that when valuations go up, if we're under the, the rules of the game for property taxes, then the tax rate should go down, right? That's House Bill 920, values go up, the rate should go down. But our district is on the 20 mil floor, and so when valuations go up for that 20 mils, the district will receive additional revenue which will go to the general fund. So that is a source of some of the additional funding that we will get. Those dollars are ongoing to us. So we'll receive them this year. Unless the values go back down, we will continue to receive those dollars to do that. Currently, our state funding, the state is in a very good position. It was one of the states that is recovering a little bit faster than some of the other states, other 49 states. Because of that, the governor saw fit to reduce the reduction. That was, that was mandated last May, not only for FY '20, but for FY '21. What those dollars relate to, there was a reduction for this year of 1.6 million dollars. Instead of 1.6 being reduced, 0.7 is being reduced. So $900,000 is coming back to us in funding for this school year. That's one-time-only gain that we get. In the proposed budget bill for FY '22 and FY '23, what was expected was that the state would bring us back to funding levels of 2019. That in essence is three years ago, so think about that. We're kind of rejoicing that we're at least back to 2019, but that really doesn't take in consideration any increases, you know, over those past three years. But it is what we projected, so that is a positive thing. In addition to that, though, there is a line item, which we kind of affectionately call the governor's line item. That's the wellness dollars. And as we read that proposal, it's not acted on yet, but as, as we see it going forward, those wellness dollars in FY '22 and FY '23 will increase about $600,000 the first year and up to a million dollars the second year. So those are some additional funds. We also believe that that's going to be ongoing. It's not one-time only, but it will, it will be ongoing to the district for us. Current year budget, FY '21, so shift to the expense side. You know, we, we did meet with the budget directors this past month and a half, and through those meetings, you know, people stepped forward and say, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna need and we're not gonna spend all the funds that were allocated to us for, for one reason or another. That totals about $900,000, so that's going to end up going to our bottom line. But again, we see that as just a one-time only, um, that is coming to us. If you're probably getting the trend here, I keep qualifying everything with it's either a one-time only or it's going to be ongoing. And we'll get to that in a little bit here. Now here's, here's some funds that the superintendent had talked about, a little bit of bigger funding towards us. You are aware of the CARES Act and the CRF funding that came to us almost immediately last year when the pandemic hit. There were some great things that were able to be done with that. You heard the superintendent keep repeating the word investment. I think if we learned anything from history, it's taught us that after a crisis or during a crisis or during a great disruption, those organizations that were most successful were the ones that invested in things. They invested in their people, they invested in their facilities, they invested in their, invested in their programs, and that's exactly what we're doing. So with that first round of funding, we were able to make sure that tablets were in every child's hand and every teacher's hand, and we moved through that. We were able to make sure that everybody was connected, and so it got things, things connected. Also, we're able to pay for some costs of COVID with cleaning supplies and things like that. But the CARES money, and I affectionately call it ESER II and ESER III, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. ESER II, we are projecting to get, actually, we, we have been granted $4 million for, to be able to spend between now and September of 2023. So from now through FY '22 into FY '23, we can spend $4 million. That mainly is for sustainability of programs and for the learning gap that has taken place. ESER III, you've heard about that, or you've heard about President Biden signing the bill, Congress passing the last two weeks. Some people may have already gotten checks in their checking account. Well, ESER III in, to the school district specifically, specifically to West Claremont means approximately $10 million on top of that $4 million, okay? In the past, I had, it was commonly thought that we would be able to spend that money through September of '25. Last week I sat through a session and, and we were corrected that it's not going to be through FY '25, it's going to be through FY '24. So the $4 million through fiscal year '23, the $10 million on top of that from now until fiscal year '24, okay, to spend those funds. And so it's fortunate for us to, to receive those funds and to go forward with that. So all the things that you heard the superintendent talk about, this is how we're going to be funding that with that. There's kind of part two to that. Okay, and to make sure that we're spending things accordingly, and, you know, that, that's, that's a lot of funds to get in a short period of time, but the federal funds are one-time only, okay? So after '24 for the $4 million, after fiscal year '25 for the $10 million, those dollars aren't going to continue. They were, they were for that period only. They're really to take care, to spend on the, on the children and students that were in staff that were impacted by the pandemic to do that. So what do we need to keep our eyes on? First of all, again, just repeating that we're committed to making sure that we're solid through '24, okay? That means two things. A, we maintain a positive balance, okay? We have money in the bank through July or through June 30th of 2024. And secondly, on top of that, the thing that causes that balance to erode away is the difference between our revenue and expenses. So we don't want that gap, okay, to get wider, okay? We can maintain balances, but if we end up during the, at the end of that period with that, that gap being wider, that just means more trouble for FY '25, '26, and so forth. So we want to make sure we keep our eye focused on that and that gap doesn't grow. That's kind of a two-pronged metric that we want to look at. We want to stay focused on our five-year forecast. As the board knows, and the superintendent administration knows, that that is a key document that is looking at our current budget, but it's looking at how we're going to spend our funds through the next four years to it, okay? So keep our eyes on that, understand and know what's changing about that, okay? With understanding and realizing that there's some uncertainties as we go forward with that. So what kind of strategic things can we keep in mind and do with that? As I mentioned on that previous slide, there are funds coming to us that are one-time only. If those funds are one-time only, our best go forward is make sure that we are spending those on one-time-only items with that, that we are doing those investments that are seeking some immediate results, but also long-term results to do that. If it is ongoing funding, then it's okay for us to match ongoing funding with that. So as the superintendent mentioned, there's some staffing items that are core to us, that we've been doing without. This district was very fortunate to be very efficient. I know when I came here, it was identified that we have a low cost per pupil, which is good. That means we are efficient. But it also could indicate that maybe there's some core things that we've been doing without. And it's pretty important as we look at trying to close learning gaps or an additional learning gap, that we make sure some of those core things are in place. Those are some of the things that we want to look at for the ongoing expenses as we do it. As much as I said that those are two steadfast rules, I'm going to throw another one in there that says, as we go forward, we're going to have to have a need to be flexible, just so that we properly spend that money. There may be some things that we say, okay, we know this is ongoing, but we don't have enough ongoing funds to do it. We may have to spend it in one-time-only money to do that. And just as we go forward, make sure that, that we are improving, that we are doing the right investment, we are getting the right return so that we can tell that story up the road. So again, not just to, to spend the money one-time only, one-time expense, ongoing revenue, ongoing expense, but to know that throughout the next three or four years, there may need to be some flexibility as we look at that and go through with, to do that.
Thank you.
Any questions on that immediately?
I just have one more, just to kind of give you the timeline of what's coming, and I'll open it up. I've been meeting with the staff. I'm, I'm not through every single building yet. I'll, I'll finish that up this week. But sharing this, we, we've sent a written communication to our staff, and now I'm just doing follow-up, reviewing these key points and getting all their questions answered. It's certainly surprising to our staff to know that we're going to be able to invest in these things, things that they've really been needing and asking and wanting for, for a while. And so it's still, it's just kind of, everyone's just kind of taking it in. And there's a lot of details to work out between now and the beginning of the school year to implement it well. After spring break, we'll continue to communicate with families. Mr. Briel is going to send a communication today that kind of gives another layer of detail. But as you can tell from listening to Mrs. Preston today, there's just still more specifics that need to be shared related to our programming, to summer learning, and to, to all those details. And so it'll just continue to come out in pieces. We're trying to be really smart about it and not overwhelm people, but it's, it's a lot of details to come. We'll continue at our boardwork sessions, kind of doing that same kind of heavy lift with you guys, getting your input and your feedback as we go along. We have a teaching and learning focus for April, and then it'll turn into more operational needs in May. And then there will be that survey that Mrs. Preston mentioned, the enrollment survey that will tell us, are you coming back to West Claremont? We need that data. We don't always ask for this, and we need that to help us with our classroom size, teacher-to-student ratio planning, open enrollment, building to building, who's going to be in brick and mortar, who's going to be on the online academy to, to improve our planning and to be as precise as we can at this stage of the game. So we have a lot to do this week and into spring break. So now, do you have any questions about all of these onward and upward plans and investments that, that we bring forward, forward just to share with you tonight?
So going back to the slides five through seven, as far as the details of the supporting. So these are, these are direct supports for students, and it's also I would, I guess I would call it as indirect supports for the students, whereas there's indirect supporting by...
I don't mean to change it.
By supporting the staff, so the, having a, the expansion of instructional specialists, they're not necessarily instructional specialists for the students, but, but for the staff. So like, I think you had even mentioned where you, if we're going to upgrade our math curriculum instead of just dropping it on the, the teachers, and here you go, you'll, we would have someone who would be able to support, you know, support the teachers in developing that curriculum, which would then translate into them being able to teach the students. And so I, I, I like the, the investment of the direct and the indirect because we're not only supporting the students, but we're also supporting the staff. The, and, and I, I'm ecstatic about the cultural arts, expanding that to four days as opposed to eight days a month, 12. And then, but I think that with the secondary and the, the district-wide supports, I like the, the, how it's, it's all student-focused, but it's also, it's not, not every dollar is spent on the student. I mean, it is, but it's also, it's through training and all.
Well, research shows that your, your number one impact in a classroom is the, is the quality of that teacher. And so all of our key investments are about the teacher. The second biggest impact on a student's learning outcome is the principal. And so we are trying to say, how do we invest in the programs and services that the teachers and the principals deliver together to that student? So it's ultimately all about the student experience. It's just, it's done through the people who are charged with that, with that task.
And then, and then my next, I guess, question or comment is, I guess, more along the financial side is, and I think you, you focused on matching those ongoing funds versus one-time funds. So as far as, you know, paying for this, so if we're paying for qualified mental health specialists, I mean, that type of thing can come out of the wellness, the governor's wellness thing. So that's an ongoing thing, so that's a support that we can look at on a, on a continual basis. But, you know, some of the other things that, that might only be one-time funds, I mean, it, we still have over three years, so maybe some of our, our summer program, I mean, we're, we look at, you know, it may not be the same thing year after year, but it, for the next two or three years, and that's where that type of thing might come out of that. So you're matching those ongoing versus...
Right, exactly. And so just, for example, as Mrs. Preston talked about the summer school, that would be, although we're going to continue it, but, but in order to have that this summer, to try and expand it to get more students there, yeah, that would be matched with the one-time only.
And, and, and I know you've stressed to us as far as, you know, keeping, keeping our bottom line, you know, where it is, we're not going to add additional expenses on a year-to-year because you, it, it's, it's always a, a snowball effect because, you know, you add a million dollars in expenses this year. Well, if you're going to continue that year after year, year two, now we've spent $2 million. And then year three, we've spent $3 million and $4 million. If we add $3 billion, we've added $3 million this year, and then we're at $6 million. You know, we only have a finite amount of funding, and if we adding programs or services that have to continue year after year, you know, we either get to a point where, well, we're going to offer the service for, for two years, but then it has to go away because we don't have any more money to, to pay for it. Whereas if we invest in things that can provide benefit, but in a limited capacity, expense-wise, I, I like that.
Yeah, I think, I think that last part you said was key, that there are some things that we can invest in that are one-time only, but they're, the benefit of those lasts way longer than one year to do that.
Thank you very much on, on all of this. I, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, I will be brief with my comments. First, I want to shout out to Mike Climen. He works for Kroger. He was the, he's a Willoughby parent, but he also works for Kroger, who facilitated our second vaccine. That was last Friday, as everyone knows, and it was very well done, very well executed. We had students from the high school help facilitate from the health class, and they just, they had signs everywhere. They provided just friendly faces, and they were informative and helpful in so many ways. And we were just thankful for their hands-on involvement in this process. And many, many staff, teacher leaders that were a part of it and administrators. So we are glad to say that we are vaccinated here in West Claremont. And I want to highlight, this, just this week, Mr. McGraw emailed me. He's a Union Township trustee just to share the updated progress of the Wi-Fi hotspots in the community. As you know, we worked hard in our community to provide additional spots, not only to individuals, but to our, each school campus. And right now, Union Township has, they've completed the work at Clepper Park. And so this Wi-Fi, it will really create a backbone for our entire community to have better access to technology. Coming next is work in Veterans Park, Mount Maria Cemetery, Ivy Point, and, and gap areas in, in the civic center. So we are, we are thankful that, it's just another way we're able to partner with the township to help provide services for our students and families so they can access their learning and can keep that going. So I know that Mr. Parise has done an amazing job with his team to expand, and that happening with Union Township as well has been excellent. I also want to recognize Mr. McGraw. He recently worked with the Willoughby fifth-grade students on a project-based learning assignment where they are looking to find a way to help support our community. And they did some research, and they were looking into all kinds of ideas to just close some gaps and to provide things for the community from, from food and vegetables to clothing, to pantry items, to access to books. I mean, they had a million ideas, and they each presented their... I mean, they had a million ideas and they each presented their case to all of us. And so you're going to hear more about that, but we would just thank Mr. McGraw for his time on that. And finally, I just want to say happy spring break to everyone. We're just a few days away. It's been a hard push to get to this place. I think it'll be a really important break for all of our students and our staff. We'll, and we'll come back and finish strong as we really work to implement and plan for these exciting things ahead and wrap up the school year in a productive, effective manner. So that's all for me. Thank you. Thank you. Chargers comments?
So, thank you. So first of all, I just want to recognize and appreciate Mrs. Brinkman for meeting with us. Last month, we had our records commission meeting, yourself and I and superintendent. I think you see as one of the outcomes of that was the ProSource contract. So we could catch up some records that I think needed to be digitized. And that is a fairly big project that we're approaching. Mrs. Delaney and Mr. Schaft for the finance committee meeting. I don't know if everybody knows that, it's just not the board meetings that you attend, but we do have committee meetings throughout that. So appreciate your, your time on that, too. Want to give recognition to West Claremont Education Foundation. I believe it was in February, they donated 830 Gold Star gift cards to the staff and their appreciation with that. So I want to make sure they're recognized. Also want to do and continue to do it, just do what I would term a fiscal fitness minute on our finances. And then it'll be kind of two parts tonight, hopefully brief. And hopefully, since I'm giving it, it will be brief, which may be difficult. But there is a board financial report. And first thing, just want to identify with that report, there's two components to that. First component, again, always focusing on our five-year forecast. That five-year forecast has our budget in it and it also has our estimated revenues in it. Then we combine that report with our ledger, which is really looking at what's the revenues for the month, what's the expenses for the month, and what are those transactions on a year-to-date basis? That really compiles those two reports. Why do we do that? Just want to make sure that we're on or off track. We can identify that and really give any financial highlights that are necessary to the board and to the community. So I think in the past, this report's been, you know, kind of not public sometimes. We are going to post that on the website, make sure that is out there. We'll put it in board docs on the public side, but just a real brief explanation what that is. Again, it, it highlights our revenues, it highlights our expenses, it looks at our cash balance for the general fund. It does that by taking the projections from the five-year forecast. It looks at the year-to-date revenues and expenses. And then it gives percentages received and percentages expended. One of the things that we try to do with that report is keep it simple on a percentage basis, saying if February is month eight out of 12 months, we should be, you know, at least 67% in the revenues, 67%, you know, on the expenditure side. Now, we're not always going to hit that, but that's kind of the, you know, the stake in the ground to where we should be close to. If not, why not with that? So having said that, just if we look at February's updated revenues and what's been going on there, just kind of as an overall blanket term, we are on track with it, okay? Our year-to-date revenues are 71% of the estimated revenues through February. That's the eighth month of the year. Just to note, there was a 30-day delay in the real estate taxes being received by the county auditor. The bills went out 30 days late. That's causing, you know, those receipts to come in on a 30-day delay. We typically would receive what we call our first-half settlement by the end of February. We should be receiving that this year by the end of March, okay? There was delays because of that reappraisal, but, but that is there. So normally, when we look at that first line that says property tax projected to receive 44.8 million, we received 33.2 million, 74%. Normally in March, that would be 100% by now, okay? Because we would have received that settlement. But that, we know and understand the delay and why that took place. The other highlight, maybe on the state foundation side, again, as noted earlier, there was a reduction of the reduction. So during the month of February, the Department of Education kind of caught that up to us. They prorated that $900,000 back to us. So they gave us 812 for that $900,000 in February to, to kind of catch that up to us. On the expense side, you know, again, combined salaries and benefits into one line, if we look at them separately on the port, on the report, we can see that they're really kind of right at that 66%, 65% for the month. Our salaries and benefits are pretty much paid on track. We have two pays a month and, and so 24 of those 12 months. And so it's a pretty good, a pretty good handle on those. On the purchase services, that's where we mentioned earlier that when we did the review with the budget directors, it was noted that we would be spending less. And that is the area where we're going to be spending less than what we budgeted. So right now, it shows that we're at 52%. It's probably going to, you know, maintain itself through, through the rest of the year as we go forward. The other categories, they may be spending under two. We know that the capital outlay was assisted by some of the COVID relief funding. So some of that money, instead of spending capital outlay in the general fund, we were able to spend it out of CARES One, out of that first round of the federal money as we went forward with that. So on our expense side, total, we're about 60%. And we believe that, that we will be maintaining, you know, a lower than expected expense as we go forward. What do we expect in the, the next four months before the end of the year? Again, we should receive the real estate by the end of the month. It will be really important for us when we get that real estate settlement to verify the increase that's projected, that we get. We will want to meet with the auditor to make sure we know what percentage of revenue we did receive, what percentage is left to be received the second half of the year, the second half of calendar year, which will be the first half of next fiscal year. So we want to do that. We'll verify the budget adjustment, adjustments that we talked about. I think you'll recall that we did do a tax anticipation note in January, A, because it was a low point, but also because of the delay in taxes. We'll be paying that back in April. And one of the other things through the last few months of the year that we try and do is make sure that we're aligning our expenses to the right period. You know, sometimes purchase orders get cut and they may not necessarily be for this year, but for some time up the road. And it's always good to, as we kind of finalize that budget, to say, are we really buying it for this year or are we buying it for next year? So make sure we're doing things in the, in the right fiscal period as we go forward. So, and the staff's been very cooperative with that as we've gone forward. So this, any questions on that for the financial report? So the second thing I want to talk about real quickly is the property values and the tax rates. So earlier this evening, you approved the rates, the amounts and the rates, okay? Which is done annually, okay? And even after being in school business for 40 years, property taxes can still be a complicated thing, okay? Especially when you're trying to explain it to people. Because you, you can tell people that, hey, when values go up, the rate that you're assessed, the tax rate that you're assessed traditionally will go down. So the school district doesn't, doesn't get a windfall of money. But there's always exceptions, right? So one of the exceptions is that this district is at the 20-mil floor for a certain category of its millage, okay? And so what that means, and I can make it see a little bit better here. But on that chart, that, if we look over from 2004 through now, that is the ups and downs of the property values. Historically, property values always went up. And then all of a sudden, the Great Recession hit us in 2009, eight, nine, who knows when it really hit us. But property values then went down, okay? When property values went down, okay, the odd thing happened for tax rates. A lot of them went back up. That was really unheard of, you know, throughout local property taxes to do that. The values regain themselves. If we go to 2016, you'll see that there was another reappraisal. That was the triennial reappraisal where there were percentage adders. And that was a big jump that took place, okay? And then as we skip from 2016, 17 up until 2020, the S on top of the last one stands for the sexennial reappraisal. Okay, that was the one that was done in '20, collected in '21. That is the one because it, if you look at the, the jump that it took in the total, okay? That is providing us some additional funding, okay, beyond what was expected to do that. So we talked about in the onward and upward, additional funding coming locally. That was really caused by that spike up and because we're on the 20-mil floor. If we look at our tax rates for the general fund, we kind of see that story on how rates are impacted by property values. So there's really three columns of millage there. The first one says general. That really is a combination of millages that were approved. I think those go back to the, the last one might have been in the 90s, okay? Those tax rates are the ones that are adjusted, that as values go up, rates go down, okay? Except they can't go down below 20 mils, okay? If it goes down below 20 mils, it just stays at 20 mils, okay, with that. You'll see that there's a time period, again, after the Great Recession where, where values went down. We were at the 20-mil floor in 2010. Well, because values went down, property rates went, or excuse me, the tax rate went up, okay? Went back up, okay? In 2017, as they regained, okay, as those property values regained, property values went up, that tax rate went down, but it can't go down below the 20-mil floor, okay? And so the foreseeable future, okay, unless another great recession happens or if because of COVID, maybe there's something, something happens housing-wise, we'll stay at that 20-mil floor, okay? The oddity of that is this, though. When we're at that floor, when values go up, we do get additional, we do get additional revenue, okay? If the rates are above the 20-mil floor, typically, even though values go up, the rate adjusts itself so we don't get any additional funding, okay? But, but we are at that 20-mil floor with it. You can kind of see that in the, the next two columns, the emergency substitute levy. So that was voted at, I think, originally 7.9 or higher. And that has been up and down. Currently, it's at 6.03, okay? You'll look at the emergency general levy that was in the spring of 2020, right? The 7.99 mil levy. So you'll see there, because that's an emergency levy, we only get a fixed dollar amount. So even though we passed 7.99 mils, the effective rate of what's, the tax rate is 7.06. So values went up, but on that millage, the rate goes down with it to do that. So it, again, not easy concepts to understand. This chart kind of shows, if you look at the blue kind of being that general, where values go, this is the tax rate. So the blue really is the one that can go up and down to the 20-mil floor. And you'll see the white line here that there's several years we're at the 20-mil floor. After the Great Recession, it went up higher. But as values, property values went up, we went back down to the 20-mil floor for that. That's really where we're gaining some additional revenue within the district for that, okay? So what I plan to do next month is just do a similar thing. Mrs. Brinkman, I'll, I'll kind of advance that to the one on the financial report to the beginning. So when we, when we, prior to approving those financial reports. And then maybe during the treasures business, I'll take another topic. For example, because we're paying that note off, it may be good to look at our debt schedules and really how we're funding that and making sure that that's secure as we're going forward. Do we have a bond payments in May and June also as we go forward? Or if there's other topics that we want to pick up and spend a minute or two on to go forward, okay? We'll also post this on, on board docs and on the website to do that. That is all that I had for this evening.
Okay. Well, as you mentioned, under the records commission meeting, we did have a meeting to secure what we're doing with the, the records and everything. And do we need to vote on the minutes for that meeting?
We don't have to take action on that. Just note that that meeting was held and as part of our record, that we did have the minutes.
Okay. Board comments. Mr. Chumley?
I'd like to thank Mr. Perry. What, has it been six years you've been here? Looks like, the picture I saw looks like you had a lot more hair back then. So thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to know you the last two years. You've been an integral part of the team and you will be missed. And I think Easter is before our next meeting, so I'd love to just say happy Easter to everybody. That's it for me.
Mr. Klein?
Wish you well, Mr. Perry. You will be missed. We would not have gotten through COVID without you. You rallied the forces and, and made our school buildings safe with your staff. And that's much appreciated. And wish you well in your new position. Thank you to our community members that have come to join us tonight. This is not a normally this long of a meeting, so thanks for sticking with us. And hopefully you learn right along with us in our decision-making. And everybody have a great spring break and happy Easter. And here we go.
Mr. Chum?
Yes, happy Easter. Mr. Perry, I'll get to you in a couple of weeks. And again, thank you to the community members as well. I was going to ask, I know that this year with our agendas and our, our meetings, that I think that we need to be as flexible as possible. I know you don't particularly like the consent agenda. I like the consent agenda. But I think maybe if we look at for our business meetings, that we have the consent agenda portion at the end. That way, we have all of our discussions and presentations and all of that beforehand. I think whether Dr. Foltz presents personnel as part of the superintendent's comments or superintendent's business, and then we vote on the personnel at the end. But I think if we look at our structure, it allows us to have all of the presentations and all of this ahead of time before we then vote on the consent agenda before board business, things like that. I think that would help us with kind of the information that we're looking for before we vote on something. So I think if that's something that you guys can work out in your agenda meetings and how you set up our meetings, that, that's just my two cents unsolicited, so. But other than that, I don't have anything.
Mr. Rudy?
Oh, congratulations, Mr. Perry again. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Jones from Will, uh, from Summer, Willoughby.
Willoughby.
Willoughby. I saw on Facebook, a parent mentioned that her car died in pickup line and he jumped right in and pushed it out of the way. That was very kind of him.
He got recognized on a radio station after that, too. I can't remember the station offhand right now, but hometown hero.
Nice to hear these positive things.
Mr. Perry, I, I'm a firm believer that people drop into your lives for purpose. And I believe that gravity drew you to West Claremont. And I don't believe that we would have been able to withstand everything that we've been through the last six years without your leadership. Thank you very much for everything you've done from the high school to the elementaries and COVID and everything else. You've been a godsend for us. Thank you. And wish you nothing but the best on the board.
Thank you.
We do have, need to go back into executive session. So I'm going to make a motion to withdraw to executive session, I think a recommendation to withdraw for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee. And I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Chum? Call call.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaft?
Yes.
Five yes?
We will be going into executive session and withdrawing for the evening from their adjournment meeting.
Yeah, we don't need to come back.
And we're not coming back into public forums to make any decisions or anything like that. So thanks for joining us. Good evening.